It's. I mean, we're just making our own. It's just a letter of support. It's not, you know.
No, it's. It's supporting this project which impacts that. So it would have to be that. It would have to be as it's written.
No, no, because this is the city's letter. So we have to change the city to the Board of Commissioners. Our letter of support is for the project. Know what I mean?
They're the lead organization. So we're supporting the.
But we are supporting whoever the lead organization is. This is our letter of support. You know what I mean?
I'll if you I'll read it if you.
Okay. Here. I don't. Just with the instant.
Well, I was gonna say what I'll say and then I'll explain it.
Okay.
Publicly.
Okay, everybody, please rise. Join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, please bow our heads and we'll have Bishop Perrin lead us in prayer.
My father in the precious name of Jesus, we come to say thank you for all of the bountiful and innumerable blessings that you've given unto us. Thank you, Lord, for our city, our county, our state, our nation. We pray in Jesus' name that that to which will be done today and discussed will be for the betterment of our community. We pray for the blessings of health, wealth, and prosperity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Our next public workshop will be next Wednesday, October eleventh at ten a.m. in this room. There's a holiday Monday, Columbus Day. So county offices will be closed. So we'll delay our meetings a day each way. And then our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, October twelfth at ten thirty a.m. also in this room. And also a point of interest, the annexation hearing we had scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. Um, the entities have come to an agreement. They're going to withdraw and have to resubmit and we'll we'll address that another time. But the public meeting tomorrow for the annexation hearing is has been canceled. And Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioners' Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because they're not done correctly now.
Item number two is to rescind the meeting related to funding for transportation in the Commissioners' Hearing Room on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three from one P. M. to three P. M.
Make a motion to rescind the meeting.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Uh, motion to approve.
Approved.
Second.
You should say at least a little bit of it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because it includes a settlement that could have been avoided if we would have graded the bids pursuant to our county policy now.
Item number six is to complete and submit paperwork to the Ohio Department of Taxation for the approval of transfer of funds for security services from the Special Tax Levy Fund to the County General Fund per O R C five seven zero five point two four. The approval of transfer of funds is needed from the Ohio Department of Taxation to pay for the security services provided by the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office to the Trumbull County Children's Services.
Motion to approve completing and submitting the paperwork to the Ohio Department of Taxation.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Millwood Incorporated. The company is requesting tax incentives of sixty percent for ten years for the construction of a new facility located at address three seven zero eight International Boulevard located in the township of Vienna. Millwood Incorporated plans to create fifty full-time jobs at the project site within four years of completing construction.
Motion to approve the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Millwood Incorporated and Vienna Township.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eight, Trumbull County Planning Commission requests the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to authorize items listed related to the publication of a notice of intent to request release of funds required for the environmental review record. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Community Project Fund Grant Agreement number B dash twenty-three dash C P dash O H dash eleven eighty-eight Responsible Entity Agreement with Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership. Clerk of Commissioners to publish a notice of intent to request release of funds in the Tribune Chronicle on Thursday, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the President of Denny Maloy to execute the attached request for release of funds in certification form.
Motion to approve the Planning Commission's request to authorize the publication of the Notice of Intent.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the resident listed, and that's Brian W. Dre.
Motion to concur with the county engineer and grant the permit.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number ten is a routine liquor permit, and that is a new permit for Country Fair Incorporated, number eighty-five.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to adopt an improvement resolution determining to proceed with the construction of the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project number five dash S dash eighteen for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District in the Village of Yankee Lake and Brookfield Township, and to authorize the Commissioners' Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for construction of said project.
Motion to adopt an improvement resolution for construction at Yankee Lake and authorize the clerk to advertise for bids.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Benjamin Lowry for the position of laborer with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department at a pay rate of fourteen forty-five, pay range three, effective October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve personnel action for Benjamin Lowry.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Garrett Brady for the position of custodian with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department at a pay rate of fourteen forty-five, pay range three, effective October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve personal action for Mr. Garrett Brady.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is.
Motion to table this because it didn't appear that the the procurement policy for the county was followed.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item number fourteen is to approve the purchase of one two thousand and twenty Jeep Cherokee Latitude from Greenwood Chrysler in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars, and to approve the use of the insurance settlement of fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars, forty-three cents, with an additional nine thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. In June of two thousand and twenty-three, the vehicle in Taggs Fleet was severely damaged in a traffic accident, deeming the vehicle to be a total loss. The insurance company representing the other driver involved has issued a check to the County Commissioners in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantal. I just wanted to point out that though the competitive bid is not needed because it's under fifty thousand dollars, the county still has to comply with their own procurement policy, which says that if it is under a certain dollar amount, under fifty, but over, I think it's seventy-five hundred, that there's a requirement to obtain three quotes. I didn't see those. So it appears that it wasn't. Our procurement policy wasn't complied with. We need to follow all of those things. If it's under fifty, then you have to see what you do next. But I I didn't see anything, and that's concerning.
We did get a prosecutor's opinion yesterday in the middle of our open workshop. Went downstairs and the prosecutor read it over. We brought that exact point up. He said on used vehicles, you can't compare apples to apples because there's so many variables. And he gave a thumbs up and said, this sits fine as it sits.
But you still have to.
Didn't change it.
You still have to get.
Then bring it up with with the Prosecutor's Office, Bill Danzo.
Then then if there's something in writing that he's got, it should be shared with the entire Board of Commissioners. So if anyone from the Prosecutor's Office is on the phone and they put that in writing, that would be good because you're going to need it for your next audit review when this comes up.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, because we didn't follow proper procurement.
Item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County, Ohio, entering upon its journal the filing of a petition for annexation seeking to annex seven point nine five six one acres of land, parcel number twenty-eight dash five two 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 zero zero, also known as address three nine seven two Youngstown Road in Howland Township to the City of Warren, Trumbull County, Ohio, and further known as being section forty, original Howland Township, being Township number four in the third range of townships in the Connecticut Western Reserve, and to refer the legal description of the perimeter and the map or plat of the territory proposed to be annexed to the Trumbull County Engineer.
Motion to adopt the resolution uh, entering on its journal, the petition for annexation, and to forward it to the engineer for survey.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. The next item number sixteen, I'd like to table till next week. Uh, this is for authorizing Board of Commissioners to join the prosecuting attorney to file an application with Court of Common Police for the appointment of an attorney to represent us in the annexation. Uh, I want to give it a week so that we can research different attorneys out there um, and and pick the best for this fit for this uh, this project instead of just going with the one we just used. Uh, we'd like the opportunity to talk with him and other attorneys over the next week and then present a nominee or recommendation next week.
I second that. And then for discussion purposes, we may, we don't even know if we'll need an attorney. So I'd prefer to wait to see if one's needed and the type of annexation that that comes before us because we we may not need to spend that money.
Oh, we'd need an attorney to tell us that. That's the thing. And and just to caution the board, I have talked and talked to Bill Danzo. And if he he says, if you're not going to act on it this week, for sure, next week you can act on it. So um, just a note of caution. I will approve it, obviously, the tabling, but um, keep that in mind. And the Prosecutor's Office is conflicted.
You don't have the petition yet, so. And how's the how are they conflicted?
We have, we filed the petition in the last in the last journal issue we just voted on.
Yes. But it it doesn't, it's, we don't know enough about it yet. It hasn't even gone to our engineer or anything like that. So there's a process and it's a little early. I think we should just wait before we.
That's why we need an attorney to tell us.
Or, you know, we're the Commissioners, but okay. Sure. Thanks.
But the Prosecutor's Office is not going to advise us on it. That's the whole point why we needed an attorney. Just cautioning the board.
So motion to table, um, Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Okay, um, item seventeen does not require a vote of the board, but pursuant to R C seven one three point two two A to inform the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners that Commissioner Frenchco has appointed and designated Ms. Melissa Phillips as her alternate to vote and participate in all proceedings and actions of the Trumbull County Planning Commission at any meeting where she is absent. Okay, so I'll go on to item eighteen.
All right, with number seventeen, I'd like to have a discussion on it. I'd just like to ask because I got hit with questions yesterday and from the public on why you will not attend the Planning Commission meetings yourself. You haven't been to a meeting since two thousand and twenty-one. You had another designee to go. The Planning Commission is our economic development engine for the county. It's a big board with a lot of prestigious people on the board that do the planning for the county, and you had someone else represent you that we didn't didn't know. He was and he he quit. And now you're putting you're appointing someone else to let know first why you won't do it yourself. And secondly, what are the qualifications of this woman to make her be able to, uh, we know nothing about her to represent us on the board, your vote on the Board of um, Planning Commission or both the Board of Commissioners for the Planning Commission in big economic development projects. So I just, I'm just asking for an answer. I'm not thinking it's something that was asked to me. Why you don't do it yourself? And secondly, what qualifies her to be able to do it?
Okay, let's start with the first person who I put on there. His name was Malcolm Pullum. He was um, an applicant for the Port Authority. But Commissioner Cantala Mesa did not want him on the agenda to be voted on. He had a degree in airport business management and uh, an extensive background in promoting economic development and had a lot of ideas. He needed to be on something, in my opinion, so that he could learn and grow and hopefully take the place over at the Port Authority of someone who's just there because they're there. And because they're prestigious. We need to have people who are qualified and talented and not just people who are prestigious. So that's who that was, and.
Saying Darlene St. George and people don't qualify to be on the port?
She's not on the port.
Or I mean, on the Planning Commission. She is on the Planning Commission. This this one will be sitting next to people like her.
Okay, if you're not going to.
Icons in the community.
Sure.
We go ahead.
So uh, so the Port Authority is often selected because, you know, someone gives someone a campaign contribution or something like that, and then they give.
Sam Cavelli.
I absolutely am. I saw I saw what a several thousand uh, dollar donation. He didn't even bother to apply or send in his application for renewal because they're so prestigious that they just think that they're automatically going to be reappointed. So it is my opinion that we need to start um, causing allowing access by people in the community who are talented, who are educated, who are diverse, and Malcolm Pullum was that. So.
Sterling is not divorced in the Port Authority. He's not a businessman.
You know, are you, you're being disrespectful.
You're criticizing our Port Authority Board members that we have, and there isn't one of them there that you.
More than that.
Carry their luggage.
More than that, you're criticizing Sam Cavelli, who's a pillar in this community.
I'm not qualified to carry.
Who's a pillar in this community. And without him, the the Western Reserve Port Authority wouldn't be able to accomplish what we have with the relationships he has around the state and around the country.
So are we gonna enter? Okay. You you do you really think it's cute to insult someone who's Hispanic and say that I'm not even qualified?
Has nothing to do with that. You're 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 insulting Sam Cavelli. You're insulting Ed Moransky. You're insulting Sterling Williams. You're insulting.
By attacking someone with who is a minority on the board. I I just want you to know.
That has nothing to do with the minority. You have no experience other than doing what you're doing now. You were elected. That's your only experience you have in life.
What's your experience?
Business.
No, that's not true. I mean, is this what this is? Is just a degree?
Maybe it is good. You you put someone else more qualified than you on the port or on the uh, Planning Commission.
So your experiences in what, hunting and you have you believe what you believe you're qualified to talk about deer and to make a big economic development? You know what? Sit down and just stop because the person who I actually put on, who I asked to be the designee does have a master's degree in planning and or I'm sorry, yeah, I believe it's in in planning, and she's extremely talented. And I I like having other people uh, with different ideas and different views, and she also works in in downtown and is just extremely talented and has the same experience I have in running C D B G and um, things like that, which I have done. So I've I've done more than just vote on things. I've actually done the nuts and bolts of grant applications and planning for nine different communities when I worked for C T consultants. So if we're going to go there, we can, but.
Commissioner, we had a hearing before this meeting started. You weren't even at that.
I understand.
I mean, and I think the Planning Commission meetings are at nine a.m. You don't want to be there at nine. And you don't want to, you don't want to go to an important meeting where you may be outstaged with talent in that room that.
Okay. This is cute.
Here's the thing.
You know, is this where a meeting is? Why don't you, why don't you really run a meeting the right way? We got so many accolades yesterday when you ran the meeting the way I suggested based on a spreadsheet and by going through things and making decisions and sticking with the agenda. It it would benefit you and greatly.
I I asked you a simple question why you didn't want to serve on the board that you are appointed, that you were elected to do.
Deteriorating.
And you turned it in the direction of criticizing other people.
Deteriorating.
You turned it.
Deteriorating into political attacks.
No, you you turned it. I asked you a simple question.
Commissioner, the only one you've attacked is Port Authority Board Member.
Authority members.
Get back with the agenda, Mr. President, or do you want me to run the meeting?
No, we can get back to the agenda. We got your answer. Everybody saw your answer. Someone else is going to be appointed by you to do your job.
You know.
Number seventeen, please, or number eighteen.
Yeah.
Item number, item number eighteen is to receive the request from Attorney Nils Peter Johnson, agent for the petitioner, requesting to withdraw the petition for the annexation of approximately thirty-one point three eight zero one acres of land located in Howland and Vienna Townships to the City of Niles, Ohio, filed with the Board of Commissioners on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item number nineteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds for Braceville Community Foundation. And if it's okay with the Commissioners, I'd like to go to the next page with the specifics of that foundation. It's the third whereas down.
Okay.
Whereas the Braceville Community Foundation is a five oh one C nonprofit which provides historical preservation and education for the community, as well as provides services to the historical Midway Platt and steel industrial allotments and has provided such services in an informal capacity under the name Braceville Blessings prior to the creation of the five oh one C nonprofit. And whereas the Braceville Community Foundation requested funding the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the preservation of a historical house in the Midway Platt and steel industry allotments to preserve a historical landmark, preserve a collection of items from that area, as well as provide educational programming and services to the community regarding the neighborhood's role in the Underground Railroad and the Great Migration. And whereas the county has determined that the Braceville Community Foundation has demonstrate demonstrated, it is an adversely impacted industry and the grant request is reasonable and responsive. The harm and therefore, the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following. You want me to continue?
Yeah, read one more paragraph, please.
A one-time grant to the Braceville Community Foundation in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the purchase of a historical home in the Midway Platt and steel industrial allotments, installation of a new septic system, and renovation into a museum and headquarters for the community work provided by the foundation as set forth in the grant agreement attached here too as Exhibit A.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Make the. Not correct.
What is not correct?
Call the roll, please.
Yeah, now make it a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the expenditure uh, for responding or mitigating public health emergencies for the with the ARPA funds for Braceville Community Foundation.
I believe we already accepted it and seconded it.
No, it was a motion to accept, which is not a proper motion. And if we wanted to.
Accept the motion as written when you, before you cut me off.
No one cut you off. So I just made the proper motion. Does someone want to second it?
It's the same motion, Commissioner. It's the same motion.
Okay.
He's he's approving agenda item nineteen.
Didn't say approve. He said accept. There's there's a proper way. I do. I want to make sure this is done correctly so that if there's it's done correctly.
All right, I'll second it the way that she said it.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
And then for the original. Are we modifying or?
Wait, the the there's one more.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So for item number nineteen.
It was, that was the motion, but I read I read more of it to approve it.
No, we just scratched mine and we went with hers.
Okay.
Has to be to approve.
Mine was never completed.
Item number twenty is to enter an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Braceville Community Foundation as approved by Baker Dublaccar Beck Wiley and Matthews, ARPA Legal Counsel for the foundation African-American historical building acquisition and renovations to preserve the unique African-American history in Braceville as fully described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to the foundation from ARPA funds.
Motion to approve entering the agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Braceville Community Foundation.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Um, and then I'm making a motion to ratify a letter of support by the Board of Commissioners for a U.S. Economic Development Administration grant. Do you want me to read the letter into the record or I don't think we need to read it as long as we have it journalized.
Well, the other Commissioner hasn't seen it, so.
Oh, well, we got the email.
But the email is not the same letter.
So we are, and here's the letter. We're writing, writing to demonstrate our support.
The Board of Commissioner's support.
Okay, it's not, hang on a sec. Writing to demonstrate the Board of Commissioners' support for the formation of a Community Conservation Corps and the the counties request for support from the E D A. The goal of the project would support the community in green space while providing Trumbull.
Request requesting.
Hang on a second. Trumbull.
The city has has.
Let me just finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Trumbull Counties, young men and women with a livable wage while educating and preparing them for the workforce. This project, the Garden District Youth Conservation Corps, will catalyze future investments in the Garden District of Warren by creating new demand drivers for real estate, enhance the neighborhood, and contribute to the quality of life improvements for those living and or working in the district. Y C C participants will earn a living wage while receiving training and hands-on experience in forestry, horticulture, agriculture, conservation, environmental restoration, and other professional skills by strategically recruiting from neighborhoods that aim to serve. Y C C will foster community engagement and bring much needed diversity to arbor-related industries while offering participants a strong foundation for careers, career success and advancement. Uh, we hope you will look favorably in considering this project. We ask for your support to bring the project to fruition. It's from the Board of Commissioners. This was requested by us uh, over the weekend, I believe it was, and the deadline for their grant application is tomorrow. We received a sample letter that was used for Warren, and it's just being modified slightly in order for the Board of Commissioners to sign anything or ratify a letter. It has to come to the meeting. This is just in time. to the meeting. This is just in time because if we approve this, then we can sign it and have it included in their, um, grant application tomorrow. So.
Okay, there's one word we need to change on here, though, as you read it. I believe in the second line, we are supporting the city's request for support from the E D A. You put county, the county's request. We're not requesting it. We are supporting their request.
Correct.
So it should be the city there. You crossed out in Rhode County, but that should remain city.
So and just to be clear, this is a grant that's being submitted by the Coalition for Greater Warren, uh, which is sat on by Mister Sam Cavalli, actually, that's been helping this process move along ironically, but, um, we want to thank them and Dennis Blank and, um, Mister Payavellis uh, for taking such an initiative and the mayor and the city of Warren for taking such an initiative. We're glad to support this. Uh, letters of support do mean a lot when it comes to grant funding, uh, and the county is behind us a hundred percent. So, thank you.
Okay, it's just, it's just slight.
That way she can get.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. So we're. That was a motion. Did someone?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
For the letter of support.
Yeah.
Yes, Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Mister Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our regular business on the agenda. Um, is there any other business from the board first before we go out to the public? Um, the one, one thing I like to comment is yesterday, we did have our A R P A meeting. Uh, I think it went extremely well. We got a lot of good feedback, a lot of positive feedback from the community. We did our best to spread as much money around the community as we could in the first uh, doings or the first round, I should say, of, of approvals yesterday. Um, we gave out about forty-three grants, I believe it was, that totaled about five and a half million dollars. And we have about five million remaining. And the way we did it was the ones that were majority, two yeses and a maybe or two yeses and no-no went through. The ones that were maybe, maybe, um, are still pending there. Those are ones we need to have another meeting and dig into a little deeper. A lot of those were infrastructure, uh, or related things that way. So it doesn't mean if they weren't awarded yesterday, that they're not gonna be. Uh, it's, we just have to readdress some, some of the ones, some of the ones that were bigger. And then we wanted to see how much money we had after we uh, upheld our commitment, uh, to the townships and the small villages and municipalities. Um, now afterward, last night, I'm sure we all got a lot of feedback. I, I think we did a great job of what we did. There were a couple of entities that were missed, um, that I just kind of like to address with my colleagues here. Uh, one of them was West Farmington Village. Um, the mayor had written a letter last night that, uh, they had applied early on and were not approved. Were not approved. It was before we had the portal, uh, but she said they do have a project now for some ball fields. I replied back to her via email to please some resubmit that grant and I need to know, is the portal open, Martha? Come up to the mic if you, if you could.
Sure.
I'll do what I did with both Fowler and, um, the East Gate applications, uh, although East Gate actually had a blank application. I will forward to her blank applications and then she can just send those back to me since the portal is not open. And then I will put those on the, um, pending application on the commissioner's drive and I will add them to the spreadsheet. I'll put them on the maybes for now, if that's okay. Um, since we're on this topic, it's okay. I'm just gonna do my, my little follow-up that I had from yesterday.
With those, let me finish with the ones, other ones I had.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So one of them was West Farmington Village, so I would encourage them to go ahead and submit that.
Yeah, I'll take care of following up.
We also had Mecca. Um, one of the trustees is a farmer. He's been in the fields and they just changed clerks. So the, the notifications, um, may have been lost or any of the correspondences. The other trustee is a, uh, sports coach and she had fully intended on, on submitting something, but she didn't know of the deadline. They have a request for a, um, repairs to their village or for their township.
The same way with the same thing that I will do with Mayor McIntosh. I'm familiar. I know trustee Clemson.
Yep, so those, uh, those two had called last night and I would like to ask some leniency for my colleagues here.
Absolutely.
That we allow those to be put.
Said yesterday, yeah.
Yes. Also, also, Mister Chairman, uh, Veterans Outreach, a very, uh, uh, useful and productive organization for our veterans here in the valley, especially in Trumbull County, is moving facilities. They're in Liberty Township, but they're moving sort of across the street from where they're at and they're expanding. They had put something in, but they didn't put it in the portal. Um, and, and I talked to their director, John Eli, uh, the other day, and he, he was wondering where it is. If they can resubmit, I mean, this is a valuable organization for our veterans.
I don't have contact information. If you will either forward me contact information.
I will.
Um, I'll be glad to do that. I'll be glad to reach out. And if they have the completed application, they can just send it to me, but I also can send them a blank one.
Very good. Thank you.
There was, there was another one yesterday that I had brought up and I'm gonna bring up again because this was something that he had said he had talked to another commissioner and, and explained it. And I think that might've got diluted in with, um, confusion with the Veterans Outreach thing. And that's that USS Oklahoma Project, which is also a Veterans Outreach organization. I would like to ask again if we could submit that one to twenty thousand dollar grant. It's a, it's a business in Warren. He has an office and they just want to be able to pay the bills so they can volunteer.
We get, I, I'd be in favor of that as long as it's eligible through the, through the legal council.
So can we move that forward to legal counsel? Is it a yes?
Okay, that is an absolute favor for someone who sits in your tent at everything. This is just going to help him pay his rent, you said, so that he can.
And he volunteers this time for veterans and veteran services.
There is no, he does, I, I spoke to him originally because he asked me about that. There is no documentation. He, I know he doesn't have documentations of the service or of it, of anything. And if you don't have that documentation, all it's going to be is, is a waste of money and, and legal. There's, it's just not.
I disagree. He is a registered nonprofit and he, and that'll be for the attorney. There's something wrong with it, but many people have donated to them in the past and there are, I heard from one of the families yesterday, there are two families that got the remains back of their family members from the area that were involved in Pearl Harbor. One was Pearl Harbor, one was Vietnam. And it was orchestrated by this gentleman and his organization and they were, they were devastated. They were devastated that he didn't get the funding for what he volunteers to do. And that's why I asked again, um, it was said that they had talked to other people and they thought maybe they got diluted with the Veterans Outreach and with the other veteran stuff we had, so.
Conversation with Danny before this meeting.
I'm sorry.
Because yesterday you were, you acknowledged that the, the application was extremely convoluted. None of it made sense.
It was convoluted.
Gaming. I talked about like hanging. He actually said that he wants to help people with about five different things like blockchain and they sit and they play video games and like all these other things. None of it really is cohesive. Uh, the application, I'd invite any, anyone to look at it.
This is, this is an organization that, that helps veterans. First of all, it's not just helping people. It helps veterans. Let's get that straight. Uh, and there are different things that they do. I mean, to sit here and say with a modest ask of twenty thousand in comparison to a lot of these asks and, and a veterans outreach program to say completely no.
It's not a veterans program.
Let's get the legal opinion and then we'll go from there. That's all I'm saying.
Wow.
It's not a veterans program?
I read the application. Anyone, I have that application. It's.
So we have the consensus of two to one to move that one forward. And then the, the Mecca and the West Farmington.
I'll recap.
Once, once you receive those, let us know.
And political tense so that he, I mean, I know what's going on here. It's so obvious, Danny.
Like, Commissioner.
Politics, the politics, the politics. Like you, you hang out with this guy, walking around.
I don't hang out with this guy. This guy, this guy, I believe that your social media when he ran last time. So I don't know what you're pointing the finger at me for. Your thumb's pointing back at you.
No, I, really, I have no interest in a, in a poorly written application. It's, but, you know.
I believe in the cause. I believe in what he does with veterans. I've seen it firsthand and I stand by my support of this.
Everything you do is political.
And there was another one yesterday also that I believe, when I looked over the map, we went over the map of everyone now that we, and if Mecca gets involved and Farmington gets involved, we didn't talk about, we, we have a pending one for research for Brookfield involving a road project. And we have the pending one for Vernon Township involving a road project. We kind of skipped over Bizetta. And that was something yesterday. It was a three hundred thousand dollar ask. The only one Bizetta had, they had not received any other thing from this other than a, a waters, infrastructure, like many of the areas got that we kind of ignored yesterday.
I want to make a point of personal privilege to get my paperwork for this.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you.
And if we were doing Bizetta, the only ones I see that still glare out at me that I would recommend they submit something in the future would be Green and Lordstown. Every other township or village was, got at least a request. Most of them got two hundred thousand plus in the rural areas and, uh, I don't want to see Green or Lordstown Village miss out on, on the funding that we have here before we spend the rest.
On those two, would you, because we don't have an open portal. Would you like me to reach out to the trustees in Green and to the mayor of Lordstown? Um, to see if they have any requests to submit directly?
No, I, I definitely green. I'm, I'm not. Lordstown had, they're financially well off. I don't.
What does the majority of the board think?
I would say yes. I want to make sure that I want to have it spread evenly. I'm not gonna single out one and say, no, you're rich.
While project in Lordstown, that's.
And, and my other, I think, because you're kind of talking about some of this. My other question is, some of these that we said to resubmit, the two that were denied before that we said to resubmit to legal, we didn't really have a decision on those. I didn't really have those as anything, as a maybe, a yes or a no.
That was the Vernon Township.
Vernon and Kinsman both. So those are both.
Kinsman, we took off the table because we gave Kinsman a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Vernon, yes, that was the only project.
Reach out to Kinsman to find out if that was their priority project because.
I did, I did talk to Kinsman yesterday. I talked to trustee Leonard yesterday.
Again, no, I would like to see it in an email if, that, that that is their priority project because what happened was originally, road projects weren't necessarily easily allowed.
Kinsman.
Kinsman is not a road project.
What, what, what was there?
It was a garage for police cars. The trustee said they found other means. He said, stick with what they had. I talked to him yesterday after the meeting. I also talked to Mister Crosby and he said, go with what we did yesterday and scrap the road project that he had yesterday.
Let's.
That was for Gustavus.
Prop these, uh, trustees, if we could, please, because I don't, I don't deal with the.
And I will forward, I will see you.
Yeah, we don't do, um.
You can reach out to Mister Leonard, Mister Crosby and Kinsman and Gustavus. They'll tell you the same thing they told me and then we'll stick with the ones they want.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Um, and then first of all, uh, there were a few that were maybes that said, reach out to legal. And I sent you, all of you, a spreadsheet that where I added your decisions, what I interpreted as your decisions. And I didn't really receive anything back, um, although I did speak with Mister Malloy last night. Um, I want to make sure that those are correct before I kind of move too far forward in doing things. Uh, but just to let you know, um, I have tentatively created a new spreadsheet with all the yeses, everything that you did yesterday. Um, I'm going to move Braceville off of that and into the allocated promised one because you've gotten the resolution done. I'll separate the remain, but I need to know if what I gave you was correct because I want to make sure I have everything right. Um, but then, once we know that, I will also separate the maybes and the noes into two separate sheets so that everything is a little better organized. And you know, you've got the ones that you definitely said no to. We're gonna hang on to those because you did say we may revisit them. But I think at your next one, you want to look at the maybes.
I'd rather see the yeses and the maybes on the same sheet.
Well, it's kind of hard. I can, I, I can give you a separate sheet for the maybes. There's a reason I do the yeses because that tells you how much you've committed to pending the legal. And that's why, and it's much easier to, I'll be glad to do it on a second sheet on the same.
Any of the noes because that would be more confusing.
I just explained that I would be doing the maybes and the noes on two separate sheets so that we hold the noes for later.
Warren. On Urban League. I don't see this Warren. There, there was one that we skipped yesterday that we didn't even go back to.
I, I had written circle back on that, which I interpreted as a maybe. That's the Youngstown Warren Urban League.
I see on my list. I see everything's alphabetized. Warren Civic.
First page.
No, I mean.
On the thing, I believe it's Greater Warren Youngstown Urban League.
Greater, that's, okay.
I didn't do all the folders as we're done before I came in.
Thank you for that because that's where it was. It was under greater. I was looking under.
And I had that on the maybes as one that you wanted to circle back to. I had circle back on my notes, but I put it on the maybes when I sent you the sheet to review.
Okay, and do we have what you sent? Because I tried to, I wasn't able to look at it from my phone last night. The, um.
You have to open it on a laptop.
In your email.
Yeah.
Can, I can, I can print out that for you. Um, I'll be glad to do that and I'll send it up.
Thank you.
Or you can go in the office and hit print.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I want to just clarify. I'm going to reach out to Mecca, West Farmington, the Veterans Commissioner, uh, Cancelo Mesa is going to give me that contact information for their applications. I'm going to reach out to Green and Lordstown and, uh, see if they have any applications. I'm going to reach out to Mister Crosby from Gus Davis and, uh, Mister Leonard from, uh, Kinsman. Because those are the, I believe, the chairman. Um, and there was one, I encourage you to look at your spreadsheets very thoroughly that I sent because there was at least one, and I can't find it on here, which was a maybe, but ask for a legal opinion. And so I don't know if you guys really want that to be a maybe or if you want to move it to the yes. I, I'm sorry that I can't find it right now.
That was, uh, I had it listed as an R for her to research.
Okay.
And that is.
And that's fine to do that still as a maybe without, with getting a legal opinion. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that was what you wanted. There was one other one too, and maybe we can decide this later after we get the legal opinion, but the Warren Civic music. Ms. Frenchco was a no, but, uh, Commissioner Malloy was a yes for ten and Commissioner Cancelo Mesa was a yes for twenty-five. So I had it as a yes, but I don't know.
There's some interesting things over there.
Oh, the McDonald Water Tower Project was the research one.
Okay, so we still want that just as a maybe for now, but still put it as a legal opinion, right? I also, by the way, I sent.
The majority of the board say, Martha.
On that one.
Which?
On the one that he's, she's talking.
The water tower.
Water tower.
Yeah, oh, McDonald.
Yeah, I think they, at, at the time, it seemed like, and of course, there was a lot of cross talk, but it seemed like, uh, you guys wanted a legal opinion, but you weren't ready to put it in the yes pile.
I think it was a maybe for me.
That's what I had.
It was a maybe for.
It's a large ask. It was over five hundred thousand dollars. I know that.
A request to research that until we make a decision because if not, it's just a waste of money. So I'd rather wait.
She was already told yesterday when she left to research it by us and that's when she left. There were two things she was researching that she confirmed with us. That was one of them.
We don't research something that we haven't made a consensus on. It's a waste.
We had the consensus yesterday for her to research it.
And you have one today.
Do you?
And then the one other one too that I saw is the Port Authority. We had talked about them getting their government funds. I, I had a phone call this morning with them and they had initially asked for five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And he said from what they got for the runways from the state, um, that they can readjust their ask to three hundred and fifty thousand. That would help them leverage to get more state and federal fund funding. What this is, is for them to upgrade to tie into our sanitary system because right now they're not only their, uh, water runoff runs into our sanitary, but that, that was recommended by our sanitary. not only their water runoff runs into our sanitary, but that that was recommended by our sanitary engineer that they increase some type of valves or something to be able to handle the water better. So they said they're five eighty-five. They can, they could accept three fifty and they would be totally fine with that and that would meet their needs.
Right. I believe we had that as a maybe. Do you want me to move that to a yes, or do you want to leave it as a maybe for now?
I I know the 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 future of the airport and um, you know, every, everything that surrounds that facility uh, is is really important as far as infrastructure goes. So I'm going to move that to a yes, especially after, especially after.
Being that they changed their ask.
Yes, and especially after, we know that, we know where our tentative totals are right now.
Where did they change their their ask?
And I got an email today regarding it and I have, and I will forward that to you and you can contact Mr. Trevina.
I'll be glad to do that and I will attach it within the applicant or within the pending applications as well.
And this is just, this is just tying up loose ends here, guys. What we're doing is continuing from what we did yesterday. Once we saw how much we had.
I got applications. It's for churches.
Correct.
Consistently doing those for those. So that was one that we were going to circle back to.
Okay.
And so.
I would stick with that. That's where it was yesterday.
He didn't. He actually didn't make it say anything about it yesterday, but I'm I'm.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
Warren and on Urban League.
Right. Actually, I had it as a maybe.
Okay, so we'll make it a no.
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
This time with that ask, if they want to readdress also with a lesser amount, it's another round.
I will make those.
For any of the um, activities because we know, we already said no to other ones and it's just not. I don't think it's inappropriate use.
I will make those adjustments on the on the sheets.
Okay, and that brings us back to Bizetta.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's a township trustee related one, not an engineer one.
Yes, on that. I just got done reading the application.
I'm a yes on that also then.
Yes, as well.
So move Bizetta's three hundred thousand in the column and we are still under six million dollars spent.
So with all of that, we probably still are. I we're close though. We might be a little bit over six.
And we did the best we could to spread it out amongst the whole county. And I think when people look at the map, when they see the votes that we did, we did spread it. Now, granted, we still have about five million, four and a half million left. We're going to make wise use of that also and just because a project is listed as a maybe or no now doesn't mean anything other than we took the low hanging fruit. We tried to spread it evenly as fair as we could with what we thought would qualify. Now we got to dig in a little deeper. There's some infrastructure things. There's some bigger asks that we had some that were a million, two million, five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. Those were the hard ones to kind of decipher until we knew how much money we had left. Now we know how much we have left and we can sink our teeth in those at the next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have uh, just one more question and then um, and a comment. Uh, on the Mecca, West Farmington veterans and anything that I get from Green and Lordstown, do you automatically want me to put those on the yes sheet?
No.
What is, okay. You want to look at all, for all of them.
But I'm, then we need to see them.
Okay.
But then I'm going to squeeze them ahead of us meeting again for the maybes.
That's fine.
If we can get them in with the next week, it would be great.
I will, I will, um, I will deal with that. As far as the changes that you have given me today, I'm going to make those changes on the sheet that I sent to you last night and I'm going to resend it just to verify everything with all three of you. And I would appreciate a response because then, once I know that, then I will move, make sure that I have a complete yes sheet, a complete maybe sheet and a complete no sheet for you. All right? Thank you very much.
Send them, can you please send them to uh, someone administrative up here so that they can print it too? Or just.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we got that settled now. Anything else from the board up front? Okay, anything from the public out there for the greater good? Sir first. And again, we are being um, videotaped and audiotaped. So please, when you come up, state your name and who you represent and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Mr. Glenn. I'm from Niles. I'd like to go to number fourteen about the purchase of the the Jeep. I would hope that you guys would have a policy to try to keep purchases local first before taking bids or reaching out. You know, we just got done talking about spreading out the ARP money within the county. Let's, let's look local for any vehicles or any purchases to try to keep the money here in Trumbull County. Number seventeen, I don't think Ms. Frenchco gave you an answer as to why she cannot attend the meetings for the planning commission. Uh, like, I agree with you. This is one of the crucial entities of Trumbull County to bring business, bring money. Do we have an answer yet, Ms. Frenchco? Why you can't show at the planning commission meetings when you're appointed? No? Last but not least, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please reach out to anyone that you know that have lived through that. Uh, October is also Italian American Heritage Month. So go Italy. Um, we saw yesterday, the other day, uh, a nine-year-old girl was kidnapped in upstate New York and luckily she was found locally. A a a man disappeared and his family frantically searched for him and he was found yesterday deceased. Every week I read the police blotter, all I see is fentanyl, cocaine, heroin. Um, it there's got to be more of an effort with this opioid money to try to curb this in the violence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's worth pointing out that um, we serve on a lot of different boards and 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 it's not just me who has a designee. Um, the other commissioners as well have designees at different things that we serve on. So it's just a customary practice before someone tries to uh, misrepresent it. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Jackson. Um, Commissioner Cancelo Mesa, I have something to read to you.
Okay.
Life is crammed with things to take care of and still you made time to show you care. That means everything. And this is a thank you from me for meeting with me. And I said in this card, again, thank you for meeting with me on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Many blessings to you and your family. Shelley A. Jackson. And I do have the information that you requested.
Thank you so much, Shelley.
You want, I'll give it to you after the.
Please, we'll talk after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hovis, Bizetta Township, um, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Aaron Bizetta. I'd like to thank the three commissioners for you guys are approving the ARP request that we had. Um, just to give you some history on that road. It's two point one four miles. It's the longest township road we have to care for. Engineers' cost was six hundred and eighty-eight thousand and some change and that three hundred thousand dollars is instrumental to our community. I just wanted to personally thank you. Also, the water line, Mauro, Denny, thank you guys for voting yes. We had a business burned down in two thousand on that road right across from my home and it it ruined the family. The family had to go out of business because of not having city water on that road. It's huge for us. It's a quality of life and I want to thank you both for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that because it's important to say that that project was not done properly by our county sanitary engineer. They took numbers from twenty eleven and combined them with numbers from twenty twenty-two just for the extent for an additional part. They didn't make sure that the people were homeowners. It's not about, it's not necessarily uh, about not supporting a project. It's about doing it the right way. And that's what I take exception with. And in Trumbull County, there's been a history of people doing things just however they feel like doing it. This is how we've always done it. But you've got petition, a petition and then an interest and then you're morphing them together. It doesn't follow the way according to the guidelines for Ohio, but they're going to push it through anyway. Fine, but we just need to make sure that we do things correctly in Trumbull County.
It was told us many, many times, we didn't even have to poll the residents. We could have done it anyway. That was a courtesy that was extended.
Actually, if you did it that way, then the county would have to pay. In order to do it the the way with the interest and with the community involvement, that's the only way in order to assess them to make them pay.
But I think you're, I think we're missing it. I think we're not seeing the forest for the trees. He's talking about a real tragedy and that affect affected real people and a real business. You're talking about a process. I will always err on the side of assisting those residents for any mental gymnastics about the process. Yes, it is.
For you, that's unfortunate.
We followed the law commissioner. We followed the law commissioner. We followed the law. It was legal.
Okay.
Another thing to consider.
Does it make it?
Another thing I was reached out to by a resident there and they said their insurance, they had all state insurance rated them a nine because they had no fire plugs on that street, which their insurance jumped up dramatically because they were rated that way and it was lost their insurance.
That should take precedence.
Now, now that they will have, now that they will have a water line and fire plugs, they'll be able to be rated a one, two or three, which is going to decrease their insurance bill for their home. So although there are tie-in fees and stuff, there are benefits on the backend with them insurance-wise by having a water line.
We just need to do things the right way.
I believe we did. So this is more.
Do do things the right way.
And like you said, we are, we cannot extend to the northern part of Trumbull County unless we extend to the middle of the county first. You know, it's it's a, it's a chain. We need to do that.
Again, I know it it it's mental gymnastics for some people to do.
No, it's process over progress.
It's absolutely, um.
And I don't agree.
Windshavers, Braceville Community Foundation. And they said, yes. So I wanted to do that. But truly, from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you and um, this whole process of coming here to the meetings, the good, the bad and the ugly. It's been a learning process for me that I really appreciate. Uh, and I've got a hundred things going on in my mind, but we really want to thank you and Braceville Community Foundation. We hope to have, we're going to get started right away. Hope to have a museum up by the spring. And yes, when we do break ground, you guys will be there. And um, we hope to work with all parts of the community, all the historical societies, all parts of the community. So, thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you, Mr. Glenn, for preluding to October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, if Human Resources Department in coordination with Auditor Yoder would like to educate the entire um, county employees and and so on and so forth about how important this month truly is. Uh, we handed you a PowerPoint on it. First and foremost, October is Breast Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In twenty twenty, about two point three million women worldwide were diagnosed with breast cancer, which equated to six hundred and eighty-five thousand deaths. Every fourteen seconds, somewhere in the world, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer. Breast cancer is the most cancer among American women after non-melanoma skin cancer. The five and ten year relative survival rates for women with invasive breast cancer are ninety-one percent and eighty-four percent, but respectfully. We are encouraging all county employees to understand and be aware. There's four steps to detecting breast cancer early. And as we, sorry, I skipped that, but early detection saves lives. First and foremost, practice self-exams. Second, know your risk in your family history. Third, visit your doctors regularly. And fourth, know when to get a mammogram. In the past, the county had the Mammo Van, which is a nice little, you know, ploy on words, uh, come to the county. The Health Department did that for us. They are no longer doing that anymore. So the county is looking to see if we can get the Mammo Van to come and offer uh, screenings for women in this county. Well, we're reaching out to the Jody Obdo uh, Center and we'll have more information on that when we get an answer back. Breast cancer awareness. This is just specifically in the United States before the numbers were nationwide. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. Every two minutes in the United States, a case of breast cancer is diagnosed. Breast cancer, again, is the number two most common cancer in women. Every thirteen minutes in the United States, a woman dies from breast cancer. How to reduce risk would be to exercise regularly, do not smoke, drink less alcohol and make sure that you have an annual mammogram. There is hope. Two point nine million women, two point nine million female survivors live in the United States. If breast cancer is found early, confined to the breast, the five-year survival rate is ninety-nine percent in the United States of America. I'm going to let Auditor Yoder conclude us here, but we are going to be asked that the commissioners, as well as everybody else, helps show our support and I'm going to let her take over from here.
Auditor Yoder, um, I asked to join Alex in this for two reasons. First of all, I know firsthand that early detection of any cancer can help you survive. Six and a half years ago, I was diagnosed with uterine cancer. I stand here today alive because it was caught early. And I'm grateful for that. Also, breast cancer has hit my office. We have an employee who begins chemo this Friday. We asked that all county employees show support for our employee by wearing pink on Friday. We hope that you'll do that. And just one message to that employee. You've got this girl and we've got your back. Thank you.
Also diet, alkaline diet is really important for all cancers. A lot of people don't realize that you can prevent cancers with what you eat and what you avoid. And that's important to, you know, look up alkaline diets. Not only does that help prevent cancer, it's arguably a a method to cure. So.
Anybody else have anything from the public? Okay, we'll go to the phone lines. If you have a comment, please uh, star six on your phone line. And announce yourself.
Hey, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Hey, this is Ken Yunkins. I live in Berg Hill. I got a question. Um, Agenda seventeen. I got confused how it sat. Were you guys supposed to vote on that or was it just a statement that she was going to appoint someone? I didn't see it.
It's, there's no vote. It just needs to be journalized. That's a process according to the Ohio Vice Code.
Does this person, let me ask you a question too, if you could. They have to be registered as a volunteer with the state? Do we have to have an application on file or anything for workers comp attending a meeting or they have to be a a certified volunteer? Do we need to do that at least? If they're going to serve and represent a board, they're volunteering to do that. I would think that they would have to be just like we'd have a volunteer in any other office. And we discussed that in past meetings about the liability to make sure we at least have um, their information on file and in case, like you said, they were to get hurt at a meeting or whatever. No, I mean, that's that's true.
Have you ever had to do that to me in commission? I mean, you got your HR director nodding her head, no.
That's where I'm at. I'm asking a question.
Silly. Okay.
Yep.
Hey, Denny?
Yes.
Since I got two minutes, I got a second question. It was brought to my attention. You know, this was hearsay. Trumbull County Fairgrounds. It was brought to my attention that the cell reception is terrible out there and it was told to me, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, that a deputy sheriff officer said that he had no nine-one-one capability on his cell phone. I know there's other communications. Have you heard of that? And if so, is there any planning to correct that situation? And that's all I have. Thank you.
There were issues where there was no cell reception. There were a couple of issues during the fair where the deputies couldn't get into nine-one-one. There was one fight where they couldn't even get ahold of each other uh, other than on the radios. That is something we're going to address for the future. We had a meeting right after that. I talked to even Nick Coggins and we had talked to um, Mr. Christie, Kristen, from Mahoning County. He said he had dealt with that in the Cantfield Fair. He was going to make some phone calls and work with us next year to make sure that we have a, at the very least, a mobile hotspot uh, that would be able to to reach the capabilities, what we would need for the fair. So and we hopefully will never have that issue again with the cell phone reception. and we hopefully will never have that issue again with the cell phone reception, not only for them, but the neighbors that live around there. When we jam everyone in the fair, there's neighborhoods there um that cannot get cell reception, cannot get Netflix, cannot get anything because of the uh the jammed up reception and the lack of internet and uh phone. So we then thanks for asking that. We will address that at a later time, but that is something that's on the radar.
All right. Thank you for addressing my question.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, star six. Yes.
This is Christine Glenn. Uh, I just want to make one comment. Of course, the um fake veteran on the Board of Commissioners again shows her, she boasts constantly about what she's a veteran and then she always votes against the veterans uh organizations such as the one you mentioned earlier. And then she turns it around to be political to make her point. So everybody needs to wake up. She's fake and phony. She's she's no more a veteran than I am. Thank you.
All right, any other phone calls?
Yeah, hello?
Yes.
Uh, Patricia Wyatt. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, when is she off the board for planning? So when we can get somebody that's actually going to go and do something? Anybody know the question?
I I didn't even hear the question. You were muffled.
I said, when is she going to be up for the Board of uh
Name, name and where you're from.
I said Patricia Wyatt, Niles.
Okay.
Catty. Hey.
Hey.
Hey, girl.
Who's this? When is she going to be up? So somebody else can get on the planning board. Who's laughing and not answering the question?
We probably. Okay. Um, let's move on to the next one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Gary Newborough, Sanitary Engineer. I remember this from when I was the planning director that is mandated by the revised code, the composition of the board and three, the commissioners are permanently uh a part of the planning commission.
So he's talking during the meeting. You have to take minutes.
We can't hear what he's saying, so it doesn't. I didn't, I didn't hear what he said.
Problem that we have with our meeting minutes being videotaped, the revised code is very.
If, if, right. And if he does not address the board, he mumbles something in the crowd, we don't have to pick it up. Whether she was writing it or whether it was video or audio.
Hear it on.
Well, then repeat it so that she can repeat it for the record then.
Inaudible because someone doesn't approach the mic or say their name first. It is extremely specific what the revised code says. You have to announce your name every time you talk. So all all of these meeting minutes being adopted.
No, that part of the meeting will not be accepted, just like somebody mumbling a slur or a grumble. You don't write those down, even if you're doing notes. Sir, you had something to say.
Mr. Glenn, again, Niles City, uh. My question was, Mr. Malloy, I think you stated earlier, the last time that the appointed commissioner showed up for a planning commission meeting was?
September 2021.
21, and this is October 23. So how many approximately, how many meetings do you think were held where she should have been there?
We do planning commission meetings once a month.
Once a month. So that's, that's quite a few. Um, one other thing I want, uh, there's been a lot on social media about Ms. Frenchco parking in a handicap spot. And I know I've seen on her vehicle that she bends the placard and stuffs it up in her headliner. So all you see is the number. The crucial part of a placard is the blue part with the handicap that has the date of expiration. To me, as a handicap placard holder, after five back surgeries and countless other injuries, um, this is disgusting. Uh, someone that could truly need and use that spot and and, you know, she's dancing in Mahoning County, I think somebody should tow that car.
Good morning, commissioners.
Okay, let's go in. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Let's, let's do the phone call first, please, because you got through. Yes.
Commissioner, good morning. This is Joe, this is Joe Kefram from Howland. I just wanted to give a amazing uh review to the Trumbull County Health Department. Um. They have been more than educating, more than wonderful educating so many people, um, especially in regard to what Mr. Glenn has said. Um, with the drugs that are going on. Um. I talked to them about a month ago in regard to um Narcan training, things like that. Um, this is something the county really needs to jump on. Um, I work outside of the area. I had one gentleman, I had Narcan four times last week in a matter of two hours. This is something that's going to be hitting our area. I really think Trumbull County is very much on on their game with this. Um, and the lady who is running this program was absolutely fantastic. Um, I'm just kind of curious to know if we are going to be offering more to the public and or the staff, um, especially um in the courthouses, everything else. Are they trained in Narcan procedures?
We'll get an answer for you. Alexandra, our HR director is approaching the microphone.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't catch your name, but I'm addressing the board. Uh, so I'm sorry, what?
He says his name was Joe.
Oh, Joe, uh Alexandra Divan Jonesy Bush, Human Resources Director. Uh, yeah, so you are correct. The Health Department is a wonderful partner. They do offer Narcan kits. Um, I can attest to JFS, the Sheriff's Department should have them. Uh, if there's a sheriff in a building, they have Narcan kits. Uh, they're trained on how to administer Narcan. JFS and CSEA has two Narcans uh available on the first floor of the building. Um, so yes, we do have that option available. Um, obviously, we are not. We don't take the time to train every single employee on how to administer Narcan, but yes, that is something that we can do. Uh, just reach out to HR. We'll get you and who you need to get in contact with the Health Department, and we will work to help facilitate that. If you don't have Narcan in your building or you have questions, please reach out to Human Resources. Thank you.
Other organizations and associated with the Mental Health and Recovery Board, I go to a lot of their meetings and functions and they issue it to people you have to sign for. I keep it in my car.
Yeah, you know, so you. And they do expire. So another thing that I want to actually, while I'm here, I might as well just take the moment to talk about this. The kits do expire. So Narcan does expire. So please make sure if you do have Narcan within your buildings that you're checking on the expiration date. I know before I left JFS, ours had just expired. You reach out to the Health Department, you just literally walk in, they'll give you more. They make sure that it's licensed to you and you're good to go. Um, and then also yesterday, if I can take just a quick minute, AED machines, some of our buildings do have them in this county. I just wanted to make sure you are aware of that. So JFS, CSEA, we have AED machines there. Um, and we are doing an initiative to make sure that everybody in this county has an AED machine.
While you're up here, there's also something that we got a notice of related to um lighting the county green and.
Yes.
On Veterans Day. And I, and there was a resolution to put on the agenda that was a sample that was given to us, but no one put that on. And I want to, I would like for one to.
I was going to say I had nothing to do that, but.
Came into the workshop and mentioned that it should be best to do it the week before Veterans Day.
Yep.
Also, first aid kits too, just so while I can round this out, Narcan, first aid kits, AED, we're working through all of that. We actually just had a meeting with the Maintenance Department. We're making sure that everybody is staffed with what they need. God forbid, there's an accident in the workplace. That includes Band-Aids, that includes i portable eyewash stations. We're working through all those things. Okay? Just reach out to HR when in doubt.
Yeah, and and we can keep it in our, it's very advisable to keep it in your vehicle.
Really quick for, uh, I, I just have one thing to say. Um. And speaking of the Health Department, we have a um a Trumbull County Health Department representative here today. And there's a very important initiative that was discussed yesterday, and I'd, I'd like to see uh revisited because when you talk about underserved and underprivileged communities and what we can do to better uh help them, especially in mitigating any sort of health crisis that that happens there, there's a proposal uh in an application uh from, from uh Bishop Perrin and and the and the Community Foundation that he runs there. Um, and I see a member of the Health Department here. Can we, can we discuss that again and the importance of that and why the Trumbull County Health Department is is so um in favor of this program? Just so the board can hear it again.
Yeah, come on up. She's going to get a drink of water. When she comes back, we'll go ahead and do that.
This, this is something that I'm pretty passionate about. I know that uh during the pandemic, uh there, there was a certain segment of the population in a, in a community that was uh really underserved and and affected negatively more than any other community. And we can do something to to address that uh for the future. And that's what uh these gentlemen are here.
Well, and another thing too, Ma, what I'd like to before they speak to. With this proposal that you had, now with the Health Department's moving to Cortland, there are outer areas of Warren down here that won't be as local or as close proximity to where we had it before. So this is something that's kind of a game changer type of thing too. So you guys were listening to maybe column yesterday to readdress, to bring back after we went through the townships. So so that's why we want to hear a little more on what you have to say to possibly advance this further.
Absolutely. Dan Bonnaker with the Trumbull County Combined Health District. Uh, to the caller, the, the previous caller, Joe, uh, on behalf of the Health District, uh, thank you. Um, the, I believe the young lady you're referring to uh with the Health District with regard to the Narcan and the training was Kathy Perilla. She works on our project on Grant. She does an incredible job. So shout out to her if she is listening right now from the Health District or anybody that is listening from the Health District. And again, uh, thank you, Joe. Truly appreciate it.
Can we, and absolutely. And can you talk a little bit about um the, the, the proposal and the application, just so the commissioners are aware again and the public's aware? I think it's, it, 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 it needs res spoken because again, I say this, there's a, there's a segment of the population that that was more than any other segment of the population negatively affected by COVID-19. And we want to be able to address this if and when there's another health crisis or a pandemic. And this is one way that we can do that. And I think this fits well within the guidelines of it's something I, I championed and I'm, I'm, I'm very passionate about.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantalama. Do I have to state my name again since we're switching topic?
I'm sorry.
They started talking and.
I'm sorry. I, I, that's my fault. I apologize.
Started with a question. Go ahead, continue.
Uh, Dan Bonnaker, the accreditation coordinator with the Trumbull County Combined Health District. Um. The, so the, the initiative you guys were referring to, um, it, it's multifaceted. Uh, it began with the community health assessment that was performed in 2022. Through the community health assessment, we designed the Community Health Improvement Plan, otherwise known as the CHIP. This is a uh a heavily community involved process with both the assessment and the improvement plan. We hold a num, a, a series of community meetings uh where individuals come and give us input on the uh, the health, uh, the, the current health state and then what they would like to see from the Health District. And they usually uh, they predicate or outline to us the overriding or overarching topics they would like to see addressed. Uh, one of those was access to care. Um, so what we see predominantly in the county currently is that the uh healthcare facilities or healthcare resources within the county are clustered to the South. And while all those are clustered, uh ironically, most of the health disparities are clustered within the South as well. Um, so what we have seen is a reluctance to access those healthcare resources for whatever reason it can be. So since they, it may be a social determinant of health such as transportation, uh, it may be a lack of trust. So rather than uh, we decided to address the paradigm wherein though they trying to access us, us bringing the resources to them. And one of the ways we can do that is is collaborate with other agencies um to bring mobile units to these, to these uh facilities. Excuse me, change the setting where these people can access these resources. If they're in a place where they feel comfort and they feel trust, such as a faith based organization, they may be more inclined to access those preventative screenings. Uh, you guys mentioned breast cancer earlier and whatnot, catching it early. Um, more often than not, they can access some of those screenings free of charge through these mobile services. Uh, possibly, you know, save a life. They just may be reluctant to go into the setting where it's currently offered. So by bringing those resources to them, changing that paradigm, we can uh decrease those health disparities in the South while still utilizing those existing healthcare resources.
Very well said.
So the, the, the count, the Trumbull County Combined Health District currently does not have a mobile unit. Warren City does. Absolutely. Correct. And there is a, there is a facility.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that in a second.
The, the only federally qualified healthcare center within the, within the county, which I believe is One Health Ohio, does have a beautiful mobile unit that we are currently trying to collaborate with them and Bishop Perrin to bring these mobile units out to some of these facilities. So there are a number of resources that we can access and collaborate with. We just, we, we need those facilities where these people have that trust and feel that comfort. So we can bring those resources to them and they can access them.
Okay, that was Alex Stephen Genzey Bush having a conversation uh in regards to mobile health units. And it was clarified that that was Warren City that did that. Uh, but she was talking about the need for moving through the county and access. So you can continue, sir. That wasn't caught on the record, so I just wanted to reiterate what she said.
I, I understand. Uh, that was all. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Herron, CEO of.
The only thing that concerns me is why was there such a push to leave the city of Warren and go more north? You know, I'm not even, and this is, I don't want an answer. I'm just, I'm going to make a statement. I think that it was foolish to move the um Health Department from the county seat where the majority of the population is.
They don't deal with anyone in the city. They have their own Health Department in the city. They do not.
They act, we have to fund them in the budget for something that they provide to all citizens in, in, in the, in the county.
City has its own health.
Yes, but there are some services that are provided to the city of, city of Warren as well.
They, they, they told us when I went to their, when I went to their board meeting, they told us that they do not service people. They refer them to the City Health Department. And most of their septic permits that they deal with are in the northern part of the county. So they are more accessible than the majority of their customers.
Do inspections for businesses.
Right, not in the city of Warren though.
Exactly. And the majority of the businesses are.
The city of Warren does those inspections for the businesses.
I said the majority of the businesses are that the county does, food trucks and everything, a, a lot of, most of those businesses are in the southern part as well.
It's just as far for them to drive from Cortland and Niles it is from Warren and Niles.
Right. It's not miles, it's more south. Okay.
More south? We have a lot more food trucks south of Niles, like Austintown?
Liberty Hubbard. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Good morning or good afternoon. Uh, I'm David Herron. I'm the CEO of Community Family Outreach Complex and also the pastor of Monument of Faith Church of God in Christ. Well, first of all, uh, the necessity and the need of this project is a partnership with Trumbull County District Health Department. Of course, as what Dan has indicated to you all, is that there is a lack of comfort level in terms of seeking out those who would like to have the education, the healthcare and the assistance that they need. Our church independently decided that we would extend our ministry outside of the walls of our church, which means Sunday morning, we're there for our worship service. Wednesday, we're there for our Bible study. We saw the needs being greater in terms of trying to help galvanize people minds in the area of total health and total opportunity. We spent, well, the building right now is a phrase of probably 1.2 million dollars in an area that typically does not see helping hands reaching, but reaching down where they are. There's one thing to reach at, but there's one thing to reach it. At or it, it or at, meaning that's significantly important that if we're going to better our community in terms of schools, in terms of workplace, job opportunities, training, there must be a solution where the problem is. The model of our project was taking the solution to the problem. Thank God for Trumbull County Health Department saw that we were reaching out in terms of the COVID epidemic that touched the lives of so many people. And of course.
No, he's in Warren Township. Excuse me. He just said their Trumbull County Health Department, County Health Department partnering with them.
Township. We're in the township.
Now, why, why did you choose, why are you partnering up with the County Health Department rather than the City Health Department?
No, we're in, we're in. No, we're in, we're in, actually, we're working with both, particularly our building is in the township. That's where we built the building at. And initially, what we were trying to do is to make sure that our message would be clear and crystallized. As you talked about Narcan, as you talked about opioid, as you talked about the plaguing troubles and problems that we have in our community, our ministry, along with other partnerships, have reached out to say even to the court systems. We've even worked with the court system to make sure that we can kind of help and to assist people, not only in, not only in that area, but even in job trainings. We're in collaboration with Trumbull Metropolitan Housing that when people come in for housing that we do recommend that their health issues could be somewhere part of how we're trying to help them and to assist them. So our major concern was that we would have a building that would be compatible with providing services. We not only will do that in terms of health education, but we're doing job training. We're doing typically a number of things to help and influence our community. I do believe this, and I do appreciate the consideration and the review that you've given into us. But I would contend that I believe it's a vitally important area that should be addressed. And I assure you that the dollars that would possibly be awarded will certainly would not be for naught. And I do believe that would be a significant opportunity for to enhance, develop not only just our city, our county, but the lives of so many people. We're really trying to find a way to get better. Everybody out there that's involved in riotous living and sinful activities, beating down our streets are not the, they're not the only people that are out there that that's becoming negative. We want to be able to bring something positive, a light in our community. We would have never invested that kind of money there. We could have went to 169. We could have went to anywhere else where our property value would have had some, 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 some significant financial history. But we decided to go where the problem is, taking the solution to the problem. And I close. As Dan suggested, we went through his, we went through surveys, we were reviewed, we've talked to so many people who determined that this is an ideal place for this type of services to have birth and to continue to grow. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, and for and for everybody out there, if you haven't, if you don't know where Bishop Perrin's facility is, it's a truly amazing facility. If you want to go look at it. Been there. And and we always talk about public-private partnerships that can benefit the greater good. But this is definitely one in a community that is underserved and in a community that is unfortunately sometimes not not thought of. So this is something that I'm passionate about and something that I'm gonna continue to push forward.
All right. The one question that I have, and I know there's a distinction here with many grants here regarding whether we're giving it to a church or not. What I want to, I guess the one question I have, funding wise, is $228,000. Is there a subboard within your board that if we give, if we grant the money, I imagine it's going to go to the church?
No, no, not.
No, it's going to. You have a separate account that is.
Yes, yes.
Where the Health Department has some oversight or has some.
Absolutely. Board, they will be involved. Absolutely. Unquestionably. It will not be.
Different than any than a lot of different public-private partnerships that we advocate for in the community.
Be fiduciarily and functionally.
Earmarked for that program.
Else will be used for that purpose other than what it's been deemed for. And we don't have a problem with having someone from the commissioners to come down and to take a look or check and make sure that this is being carried out properly.
Thank you. That much money.
There's a lot more than that. It's here's.
Look at the application.
That's the cover letter.
And the individuals who are being serviced.
I can tell you when you, when you gave your last presentation at.
You have to show, look, we have to be able to show that Trumbull County ARPA money is being used for Trumbull County residents.
No problem.
And not future.
No problem.
But what what has been, what has been done? None of this is in your application.
What do you mean? What's what's not in the application?
We have a stipulated, our letter was submitted with all of what we were doing and planning to do. And in our collaboration with Trumbull County Health Department, we've had that clearly stated.
You've had a partnership with the Health Department for how long now?
Over two, about two years now. We've been actually.
Existing on your own funds and and not not funds from this grant money at all.
This, so I'm seeing all these things jumbled in here, like depression and, you know, binge drinking and other things. The we have a mental health and recovery board that gets that is more actively in involved.
With all due respect, with all due respect, Commissioner, it's not being serviced in that area. The trust level, you can tell people to go to Cleveland, don't give them a direction, they'll never leave Warren.
You you had brought up.
It won't leave Warren.
It's because of, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but it sounds like the bulk of the population who will be serviced are the people who are in the city of Warren. This is.
No, it's no.
This is, I know it will.
He he brought up, Commissioner, I think one thing you're missing.
And accessible to people. I understand that. But at the same time, that's.
Well, my commissioner, I I promise you this much, we will do a comprehensive survey and we will do our very best with our board to review areas that we will definitely turn the light on in the entire perimeter of where where the county may be where they may.
I did read the whole thing. And Bishop, when you were here last time, you brought us a great map. And the map basically showed from the Health Department where the cases of everything from sexually transmitted diseases to alcoholism to drug overdoses. They were all in this hotspot that was red and you were right in the heart of that. Some of that was Warren Township, some was Warren City, some was Lordstown. It was that region there. So I I'm not going to draw lines over here and say we're not helping this guy with Narcan because he's on the city side. He's not on the county side. He is affecting a population that lives in that region. And I get what you're saying. And for what you're asking, I believe we are going to the heart of the problem. We are going to the tip of the spear directly into the heart and not the leg, not the arm. This is the war zone per se as far as where we need to treat people directly. We're going right into the into the front lines of this. So with your program where it's uniquely located with the trust of religion and the in the faith-based trust that you have, people are going to come to you, whether it's, they commit a crime, they're coming to you, they're coming to you for guidance. And if they have an injury, if they have a drug addiction, they're going to be more easy to talk to you than to go talk to some guy that doesn't look like them, doesn't live in their neighborhood in a building that they have to go in and sit in a waiting room for. So I I agree with what you're saying on this. And I think that's why we partnered up with the Health Department. This is kind of thinking outside the box. And I have to commend you for that. It wasn't in order to get my support because they needed our vote. But but I'm not discrediting his program. And I'm discrediting not only your program, but the people you serve. And every time you've been here, you've been with someone from the Health Department. So this isn't you using them to just bring a guy to to win us over. This is a real program.
Their letters of support have been numerous.
And in light of your kind remarks and to you, Madam Commissioner, we have no problem in getting your views and your input and questionings that you may have to see how can we better serve.
And I'm looking, I'm looking at this grant. I'm looking at all these grants that we did here. We did 43 grants yesterday. And I honestly have to say, with the exception of what we did in Braceville, we have done a poor job of serving the black community. So I'm, I don't want to bring race into things with it, but we have done a horrible job with these ARPA grants. There aren't very many. I'm looking at the ones that I voted on that I had access to.
May I address this issue? The issue and and true statistics will speak for themselves, but may I address the issue? We are not in a black campaign only.
Right.
We're in a people campaign. We are trying to help people. I assure you that when you come to our building, it won't say black only. We know that the statistic tells us that there is a greater need to be able to address our community. We're not looking for people to come in and do what we should do in our own community, but we we're not explicitly set up just for our community and our people. I work every day. We have another building down here, the city of Warren, 904 West Market Street. We work every day with the homeless. We work every day with those are are on serious drugs. In fact, we see people on the verge of almost taking their life. And each and every day, we're trying to sow seeds in their lives. And one little quick testimony, there's a guy who came in, he didn't have a place to stay, living in a tent. And finally, we gave him some work. And we said, look, man, we gave him some principles in terms of how you can better your life. I says, what is your ideas? Which is good? What is your plan? We gave him a plan. Three months later, my wife and I was out front, working in the yard in front of the church. He came back and left a letter. He said, Reverend Bishop, please take this letter in my way of appreciation, the same. And this was not a black guy. He was a white guy. And I don't mean to bring color into the matter, but he says, thank you for believing in me. I have a job now. I have a place to stay and I have a car. Those are the people that we're trying to reach each and every day. And I submit to you all your consideration and preferably you would look at this in light of what we're doing, not only for the community, but we believe God has given us something to do to help our community. And God knows we all need some help in the world that we live in that is so twisted and knotted and confused. Each, the gentleman talked about how he listened every day about shooting and killings and things of this, just what about in Oregon State? I don't know if you heard most recently, another shooting in another, another university. So anyway, thank you all for the time. I hope you would give it consideration. And if you do have any recommendations of how we can better serve this community as it relates to receiving the help that I pray that you will help us with, we're open for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Perrin.
Thank you.
Did you get money from Warren, too?
No, no, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Okay.
No, ma'am, no, no, ma'am. I will take some from them, though.
Figure that out.
My mind being last on the list. When was we on the list?
I know this isn't going over good, but I I get to make a motion on my end that I I want to move this one forward also.
I second that vehemently. Yes, I second it.
I I know this is kind of going on step with things, but you've been here many times with many presentations. You you come in second place to the shavers as far as being active for the last eight months. And I think that means something. When you're that passionate for what you're doing, you've had people from the Health Department every time. And every time you've been here, you started out with an ask that was much bigger than this. We asked you to kind of whittle it down. And you came up with more real numbers for us, which is right in line with what we've been doing. So, yeah, I gladly move that forward.
And when you, and when you talk about there's data-driven things, I mean, that Community Health Assessment, you know, risk survey that basically said, right in the heart of this is the problem. And the I applaud the the Combined Health District because they found a solution. Let's partner with somebody in the community. Let's make it accessible. Let's not, you know, make it something foreign for anybody that's that's been in this community. And let's help. I mean, that that's what it comes down to. And I think I mean, all the, all of the money that we spend is going to make a difference. All these projects are worthwhile. But I think this will go a very long way in that community. So I'm very happy.
If you look at the COVID guidelines, this one probably follows the guidelines.
Absolutely.
More than half of ones we did yesterday.
Yes, because the application specifically says that it's to administer COVID vaccines. So and and I I just have to express that I disagree with this. It is, the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're making sure that our projects are benefiting people countywide. And I, the fact that it's going to a church center is really concerning. We passed over a lot of, if that was what we were going to do, we could have, we could have opened it up and advertised that we're going to be giving money to to churches who are.
I think this is unique.
Think the need is is as critical as as this need is.
Done talking. And and I genuinely believe that what they're trying to do is important. That Trumbull County funds should be largely benefiting the areas that are primarily servicing people outside of the cities who have already received far more, actually, city of Warren.
You voted $100,000 yesterday for the family and community services to repair their building, right?
In the city of Warren.
They service all of Trumbull County.
They're going to service all of Trumbull County. He clearly stated it, and I don't believe the man's a liar.
Here that should, I'm looking, I'm just hunting in this application for something that says breakdown of where they've serviced people and it doesn't exist. So I.
It's a new program. They don't service anybody right now.
Mailbox. Did you look at the map that he gave you of their service area?
Okay.
The map sold me.
That's what they go by, though, is what you have previously done whenever they approve the ARPA funding.
There's a need here and shame on us if we don't act. That's all.
Okay, I I'd like to see us maybe go back to it after we look at the infrastructure projects that are countywide. But, okay.
Yes, sir. You're up now.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I believe I have three questions for today. The first one is, to my understanding that yesterday, Ms. Frenchco did not attend the regularly scheduled workshop in the morning. She attended the ARPA meeting in the afternoon, which I believe was almost three hours. Now, during that meeting, I I was watching and listening. I I heard her say that she needed one of those point of personal, she thinks she's privileged motions. She exited the room. Now, during that time, did I hear you say, Commissioner Malloy, that she was out in the hall with the reporter or somebody from the news? That's true. So while everybody was in this room.
The news was leaving and they caught her. She was coming in. So I'm not.
But still, during an active meeting, while everybody in this room was giving their time, she was out talking to the media. I wonder what she would think if either one of you other commissioners did that during an active meeting. Another, another thing is, Ms. Frenchgo opened the door for this question. After the last meeting, she ran back to Facebook and yet again tried to talk about some of my medical. Now, I have nothing to hide. I've put some information out publicly. I ended up in a bad spot because somebody in my life used the system as a weapon against me. And they manipulated a system and certain entities of the system didn't do their jobs.
On the Deb Ross, that's Randy's.
Are you interrupting, Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah, let him speak.
Okay.
Debbie Ross, Randy Law, that's right. I ended up somewhere briefly that I shouldn't have because this person used the system in a way they shouldn't have. And I have proof of all this. It's all documented that people didn't do what they were supposed to do. And I ended up somewhere I shouldn't have. I have proof of that. Now, you want to talk about my medical. I'm not an employee of Trumbull County. I'm not currently an elected official. You, Ms. Frenchco, are currently an elected official. So I'm going to ask you again, do you or have you suffered from mental illness? Have you been treated for mental illness? And have you been pink slipped into a mental health treatment facility on five different occasions?
And of course, Commissioner, you don't need to answer that when you're talking about medical stuff.
But it's okay for her to talk about my medical, but she won't talk about hers. That's interesting.
You had one more. You had to wrap it up here in your, on your time. You had three questions. You said that was two.
I can't remember what the other one was, but maybe I'll remember for next week.
Okay, it sounds like we have someone on the phone line, star six. We'll wrap this thing up here, but go ahead with your name and where you're from.
This is Amanda Aver, Warren, Ohio. I also wanted to piggyback on the month of October. October is also National Pitbull Awareness Month. And I want to make sure that everyone is aware that on October 18th at 4:00 PM, there is going to be a health and welfare meeting for the city of Warren. Because Warren is soon to be the last city in Trumbull County that has breed-specific legislation, which is unconstitutional as the state did away with breed-specific legislation in 2012. As it stands right now within the city of Warren, a pit bull is automatically deemed vicious because it was born. I've been trying to get them to do away with that as it's unconstitutional under the state for some time now, and they finally agreed to a meeting. So any support, letters of support can be sent to me for those that aren't able to attend. You can reach me through private message, or many of you already know me, can reach out to me with those. But again, that meeting will be October 18th at 4:00 PM in the council room, which is in the police department in Warren, Ohio.
Thank you, Amanda.
Okay, anybody else on the phone line, star six?
Yes, this is Patricia Wyatt, Niles, Ohio. Why was I cut off and not answered?
Hey, girl.
Why was I cut off?
What was your question, Patricia?
I said, when is she up on the planning commission?
On the planning commission? What do you mean?
Yes, because she had to. To go to the meetings? Is she the only one that goes to the meetings? Is she the only one that goes to the meetings?
We meet once a month on Tuesdays, I believe the first Tuesday of the month. Second Tuesday of the month.
So you, you and Morrow are both there?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Oh, that's all I needed. All right. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a little different than what she asked before, I think. But, sir, you had something? Mark, we need the, uh, microphone. Could someone grab that for him, please?
I'm sorry, uh, Mark Joseph Niles, you can't tell. Um, I just had a quick question for you guys. Um, a, a gentleman brought it up about the healthcare. And we're in a bit of conundrum with, with our moving of seniors and, uh, transportation, basically. Are we looking at any type of funding? I live in an apartment complex with a, a number of elderly people. And there is an office that's set aside for nurses, but they don't have anybody that goes in there. Financing, I don't know. Is there any thought to a program where we can do more of, if there's any funding out there where we can do more of an outreach program to send some of these, um, mobile vehicles to, um, apartments where there are a lot of elderly staying? In- instead of them coming, instead of them going to find the clinics, can we bring the clinics to the people? Um, cause right now we're stuck. Is there any kind of funding that would allow that in the county to, I don't know, throw some money in that direction to get services to the people?
Good question. Um, as a member of our, uh, combined health district is here, is there anything available like that or do you partner with anybody for that?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I understand my question.
Absolutely. Uh, Dan Bonaker, the Trumbull County Combined Health District. I would strongly encourage you to reach out to the health district. We have a number of grants. I'm not sure where the funding may be to do that, uh, but you could reach out to the health district, possibly speak with our grants coordinator. It may be able to, to possibly answer that question for you. I could not at this point though, but that's what I would currently advocate for you to do.
So what you're, just so I understand what you're indicating to me is that we really don't, we haven't looked down that road yet. And you're recommending that I talk to them to find out if there is a grant that would provide and that I would submit for a grant, but I'm just an individual.
We, we would just need to know the funding sources that are out there for that, for that sort of, um.
Correct.
Ask, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, we would need to possibly research funding sources.
And if you're in this. Piece to that would be some of these facilities like the Elms. Like, um.
None of this is being on the record and, um, the, there, and a board of commissioners, I'm going to ask that you control the meeting.
Why isn't that being on record? They're speaking to the microphone, it's being captured, audio.
Wasn't speaking in the microphone. A commissioners meeting is for the commissioners. If we want to refer people to communicate afterwards, they can contact the commissioners office. This is not a place for everyone to discuss things with each other. Please run the meetings.
We, we were in a discussion mode where he asked us, we referred it over to a county employee that could help him. I don't see any problem with that.
I do. It's running a meeting efficiently.
We can discuss it afterwards.
Yeah, there are, there are health department meetings for your city, which is Niles. There are health department meetings in the county. There are health department meetings in the city of Warren. They, and, and, and those are where you're going to find those resources by talking with them. It sounds like you're from the city of Niles and that's who you should, you, you could contact the Trumbull County Health Department and the city of Niles where you live.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned, I guess, with helping people than process and procedure.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry. No, it's.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the greater good of the county? We have someone online?
Yeah, this is Darling Buddha.
Hey darling.
Did you not? Yeah, did you not hear her call the, call in from Niles, girl? Hey girl, but yet when Frank and Morrow called the staff girls, she crucified them. What is her problem? The rules only apply to her. Give me a break. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't know if it's a full moon or is it, uh, if it's the water or something this week, but.
It's not the water. It's. Do you have anyone else calling in? Okay, so he's talking in the meeting. So this meeting minutes are not going to be proper because I can see on my recording that there are people talking. Everyone can hear this.
They're talking in the gallery. They're not talking as part of the meeting.
It is still.
Well, I, I wasn't, but since she wants to challenge that.
Not required.
Sean shook.
Be writing it down anyway. If we were doing notes, why do you want to crucify the clerk and make her write notes?
The right way.
Why are you against process so bad?
That's all I'm an advocate for.
Sean shook, Trumbull County resident one last time. She's so worried about people being properly recorded in this room. Tell me how many weeks now we have been telling her to properly talk into her microphone so that she can be heard in the room and on the recording. And yes, she doesn't do it. Why is that? And the other question I did have, I remember, she said online, she put a thing out that she was polling. Uh, and she was winning greatly. Now that's interesting because as far as I know, she hasn't even decided what seat she's running for. She doesn't think that she can defend her seat, so she might go after Morrow's seat. So how is it possible that any polling, any proper polling was done to show she's winning already? Maybe she'll answer that when she comes back from her personal privilege break again.
Okay, I, I want to take a motion at this time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
It's French. Yes.
See y'all next Wednesday.